We will go on the motion to go into closed session for section one, three, nine, twelve, and thirteen. Legal actions, environment, buyer, and preparations, creating discussions, or work products, and sealed bids. I'll take the motion.
I'll move.
For a second.
Thank you.
Then who's in second? Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Osborne.
Aye.
Trustee Reed.
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session. Thank you everybody. So we'll go ahead and turn the meeting back in and we'll go into the work session, Dr. Beatty.
All right, everybody. Okay. First, we see, let's take a look at the board calendar. We are going to have a board meeting. And it'll, we'll be back across the way merely because we're going to have our holiday reception immediately following. And I forgot to ask permission, so I'll ask for, right. It'd probably be a good idea for us to have that meeting at five o'clock. And then we could move right into the reception at five thirty.
Is that what they're running? Five o'clock?
December sixteenth.
Do you need a motion?
No.
Everybody has at their seats our MLK luncheon. Just to put up date, we're up to about sixty-eight thousand dollars so far raised. And we'll be really well with that. And we'll get back to our dates in January.
Beatty?
Yep.
Our board members invited to this.
Yeah, they're actually encouraged to come. Eye table. You walk right into that. Yes, so we'll see you there regardless.
Sure. All right, thank you. I'm going to see Lloyd Crump if possible.
All right. Student success report is our first year experience program, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kreider and Mr. Chris Cho. I'm not sure if there's a microphone there since he had a last call, he's going to have to retreat now, please, so that the board members can hear you.
Chancellor Beatty, and good evening, presidents, staff, and trustees. Pleased to be here tonight with my colleague Chris Cho to give you a brief overview of the current efforts that are underway with piloting a first-year experience program at MCC. This is a reimagining of the first-year experience at our college. As you may be aware, in the past, most of our first-year experience programming has been facilitated through a course, our College One Hundred class. That course is still in existence, is a good class for many incoming students. It is no longer part of some of our major degree programs certificates. So we're trying to shift that into being more of a holistic process that combines curricular and co-curricular efforts, and really speaks to the goals of long-term retention and completion of programs and study at the college, rather than being focused on just a curricular experience. So we are here really representing the work of the task force that has been working the past year to move this in that direction. We're going to let Chris take over with the next slide. And so you can see, good evening, by the way, excuse me. You can see the timeline of how we got here with the task force. We convened in August. Our goal was to combine academic affairs and student services in this combined collaboration. We developed program learning outcomes, which Dr. Kreider will go over in the next slide. In the implementation group, we imagined how our students could be part, could really connect with MCC in the co-curricular activities that we are providing here at MCC. We looked at existing programming and activities and didn't want to reinvent the wheel. These were things that we were already established at the campus level. We then took that to the executive cabinet for approval, got their blessing, and have moved forward with the pilot this year. So one of the biggest parts of this process has been the development of program learning outcomes that will be connected to this program. These will be the focal points at the district level to determine the strategic emphasis that this program takes. And then the concept is that at the campus level, different programs, activities, initiatives will be developed that are consistent across the district, but also allow for some customization at the campus level, and will allow us to meet these program learning outcomes. These will also then scaffold nicely into broad assessment efforts and accreditation efforts, going along with assessment as we move through this process. And these goals will be administered at the campus level by the vice, by the vice president, who will be in charge of making sure that this programming occurs, speaking to these program learning outcomes. And then finally, here are three of the goals that we plan on accomplishing this year. We believe these are ambitious but obtainable goals that the task force can accomplish. I won't go through all of them, but just know that within the first one, we're already doing an audit of the existing programs to make sure that they are meeting the program learning outcomes. And goal two, one of the recommendations that was made by executive cabinet was support documents. Our students going to know what programs and activities each campus has. So we're creating a support document which will allow them to see from the beginning to the completion of commencement on how they can accomplish those learning outcomes and objectives. And then finally, the work that we have done all year, we're, we're looking to create an assessment plan for the program, because how else can we measure the success of this program with our students? So in all, that is our goals for the UPY program.
Any questions for Mr. Bryan? Thank you all so much for your leadership and your work on this. We appreciate it. And just to make sure our students enjoy this, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chancellor?
Yes.
Can we get copies of the slides? Because there's lots in those items, and I'd like to.
Thank you. Thank you. Every year, we provide you with an enrollment update, and Dr. Swanson is going to provide you with that update.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty, presidents, staff, trustees. It's a pleasure to be here and share a little bit about enrollment for this fall and this past year. And so typically, you know, we do the deep dive into our annual data. It's a little different this year because last year, we had the COVID impact. And, and so things that happened last year don't necessarily make a trend, but we'll give you some high-level highlights there. But first of all, sharing a little bit about where we're at for this fall, wanted to share a national perspective of some of the data that has recently come out from the National Student Clearing House, showing that community colleges across the country have lost over half a million students from, in the past two years. That's, that's a lot. So nine percent nationally, or that was last year. Preliminary information for this year is that enrollment has dropped again about five point six percent across the country in community colleges. And so combining the two years, community colleges are down fourteen point one percent in the past two years. As of October thirty-first, our two-year fall enrollment decline is eleven point seven percent. So we are seeing a decline. It's not quite as extreme as what we're seeing across the country. But this is, COVID has had this impact, doubled on top of what we were seeing as declining enrollments anyway across the country in the last few years. A new data point that just came out today is that another promising note for, for us, for this fall, is new students are up by fifteen percent here at MCC for this fall, compared to five point, uh, five point three percent decline nationally. So I think that bodes well for where we'll be headed.
Can you say that again?
So new students enrollment this fall is up fifteen percent at MCC. Nationally, it is down five point three percent.
I know, I know you've got more to go, but when you said that, I was thinking there was this effort we were talking about to do some more marketing and different. Do you think some of that may have played a factor? I've been seeing a lot more ads on internet and cable and.
I, I think it's a wide variety of things. I think it's the hard work of our teams on the campuses, the individual outreach that people have been doing, the follow-up on contacts that we get, coupled with the marketing. So I think it's a little bit of all of that.
So you say new student enrollment's up fifteen percent. Just so we're, just so I'm clear. Is that just enrollments up fifteen percent? No.
New students.
New students. Enrollment itself is down, yeah, okay.
So we'll get into that in just a minute. We, we are, we're basically wrapped slightly up across the district for this fall. Here are, here's state enrollment trends by sector. This is relatively new information that's just been released, though that we see statewide over the past five years, enrollment is down fourteen and a half percent. Four-year, down eleven percent. Two-year public is down one percent. And the next slide has a lot more.
And, and I think at your seats, we put a complete spreadsheet that you can take with you and look at all of the data for all three sectors. But this next one, we're just going to focus on the two-years now.
Thank you. And so you see highlighted in orange is MCC enrollment trends there that show the one-year, three-year, and five-year change compared to the second orange line, which is sector total there. We are down more than the sector as a whole. I draw your attention to OTC and St. Louis, who are the colleges that are more like us than the other community colleges. And you'll see similar similarities in the types of lines that we're seeing. I think, again, promising point, this is based on data from the census state this fall, the state aid state. And at that point, we were up six percent. And St. Louis and OTC, OTC was down six percent, St. Louis two percent. So again, a little bit more promising for us, and that has settled out since. I would also now shift to what we typically do this time of year, which is the annual enrollment trends for, and this is, so this is combined annual data for the academic year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So last, last fall, spring and summer. You'll see that we have that eleven percent decrease over one year. Again, that's exacerbated by the pandemic, but we do, we are seeing that twenty-five decrease, percent decrease over five years. The next slide shows credit hours, again, down eleven percent over one year, but nineteen percent decrease over the five years. So we're doing a little bit better in credit hours, with students taking an average of more credit hours per student. The next slide shows trends related to academic load. And so in addition to the decreased headcount, we saw a five percentage point decrease in full-time students last year. Again, we expect a part of that is the impact of COVID, that less, things were taking less classes because of some of the other stressors in their lives. And then when we look at age trends, the college's average age continues to gradually decline. And we've discussed, as we've discussed this previous sessions in recent years, it is in part due to a decrease in our adult student population. When we look at the program plans that students are on, students enrolled in our career and technical programs are twenty-six percent of our student population. There was a slightly higher decrease in our CTE enrollments last year than there were in our transfer enroll, enrollments. A lot of that impacted by how do you teach some of those courses and the hands-on and impact there. Our next slide, we typically show you kind of the heat map of our enrollments by zip codes. And as in the past years, the heat map shows that the zip codes that are closest to our campuses are the ones that have the highest enrollment. It, that continues to follow. And so we, we see that with the dark purple areas there around our campus. We did last year start, oh, the, the numbers here are small, so we'll get this out to you, but we did show enrollment trends by the trustee sub-districts last year, and so included an update on that and put them in as a percentage of the population for each sub-district. And so we're seeing that the decrease in the saturation rates cuts across all six sub-districts, ranging from down point two percentage points to down point four percentage points. Our fall headcount or our fall credit hours, as we mentioned earlier, up six percent in headcount, two percent in credit hours. So it's not full recovery from the eleven percent decline that we saw in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. But we are starting to rebound, and being so, I believe at a higher rate than many of our peers, based on the national and state data. This is another snapshot of all the community colleges that we get some points on, but we see the numbers that we discussed earlier. And with that, do you have any to take any questions? And I know it's a real quick, what is normally a thirty to forty-five minute presentation at the board retreat in a few minutes here.
I've been thinking for some time now about this workforce business, and, and state has added to higher education workforce development. And so I, I'm thinking, you know, there, there might be something to look at there with retraining workers and maybe reaching out to adult populations. I'm not sure, but I'm thinking that population might be something to consider. That's my question.
No, I, I agree with you. I think that's part of why we've made the investments we've been making in the last few years with the movement of the programs from the BT to other locations, the, the MoExel dollars that we have gotten, that's also tried to attract additional adults as well as our traditional, those BT workforce programs.
And Dr. Swanson, my, my fear, my nightmare, you know, I have a nightmare. I have a birthday party, and I invite all my friends, and I have all this cake, and no one shows up. So, right, that's my nightmare. I invite everybody, no one shows. And I'm there about Charlie Brown, that's me. So, right, so, um, you know, I'm, thank you, guys. I feel that when you do that.
You should be a better friend.
I, yeah, work harder on my friends. So, Dr. Swanson, we're, we're going to, we're going to put in place these things to, for, hopefully, get these workforce development programs online. And, and how are we going to reach out? Do you know how these people feel about returning back to school and getting retrained?
I think, you know, I, I, I can't go into deep details on that in the time that we have. But through our work with community-based organizations, there's a lot of outreach there. KC Scholars with their adult learner scholarships, MCC is fourth of the seventeen colleges in attracting our adult learners to our campus through those scholarships. I think that, I, I feel confident that between the marketing efforts, some commercials we've set up going on out there, the personal outreach from our teams on our campuses, the communications that we're doing, that the word is getting out, we'll start bringing more people in. And as they get solid footing, that's the pandemic, we will see growth in this program. That's my sense of it.
You're welcome. Big grant.
Please.
I'm sorry. An off-the-wall question, but I'm thinking if I understood, just very quick, or I would say, so it's kind of the adult students, the older students that have dropped away. And I'm guessing maybe and/or not persisting. So is there any connection between the first-year experience and the age of the participant? Or? I, I don't expect you to answer that.
Too soon to tell, because we've just, we're just this fall rolling out our new first-year experience programming and framework. And so until we have a year or two of data at least, it'll be hard to tell. But I, I, our conversations have been, it's not just about traditional age students. How do we reach out? Things like, you know, the adult learner lounge that you were interviewing cutting for, and there's ten percent on all of our campuses, so that each adult student stands for them.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to have Keith McGovern, you all are very familiar with him, from BKD, to talk us through our audit.
Thank you. Thank you for having us today. It's good to be with you in person. We have wrapped up the audit. We are ready to finalize as soon as the committee's finished, the, the audit report for MCC. This was a challenging year from a audit standpoint. There's, there is so much federal money that got pushed out in the economy. And Patricia and her team and Don are very, probably tired of dealing with federal compliance standards. The amount of regulation that comes with that is significant, and the burden is heavy. And there were effectively three rounds of federal funding through the, that her funding that were received by the college. That those, that federal funding did help the institution weather the storm of COVID-nineteen. And, and as you look through the financial statements, you can see that the funding that was received from the federal government. A couple, a couple of things you just mentioned about the audit process. Everyone on the team was prepared and ready to go. There were no material adjustments or past adjustments that we need to talk about. I think that's important when you think about the financial statements that you receive on a, on a monthly and quarterly basis, that those numbers are accurate based on the work that Patricia and Don do on a regular basis. So I believe those are important things. We, we would, the, the, there's probably two comments that I'd make just about the federal funding. Number one is that that federal funding will be a Band-Aid to, to help the college over this two-year period. At some point in time, I, I, they could pass a federal funding that would provide a fourth round of stimulus to colleges and universities. But the, based on where we're at today, I don't, I don't know that that's likely at this point in time. This, the funding that was received in the third HERF program that will run out in, in, in May of twenty twenty-two. And so it's, it's something to consider and to think about, and, and really, if you plan out for twenty twenty-three, to really plan for that to not be. There's a highlight from now this year, the, the net increase in the net position was about ten million dollars unfavorable over prior loss of about ten point five million. There, there is roughly thirty-two million dollars of HERF funding that is available to be spent in the twenty twenty-two year.
How much?
About thirty, thirty-two million dollars. In, in, in that money, as I talked with Patricia and Don, that they have identified expenditure is expected in twenty twenty-two to be able to utilize those funds.
So we received three million in twenty twenty and heard the twenty-nine million in twenty twenty. Right?
Yes.
That's thirty-two million.
Yeah.
We're nuts. So we've not, so you're saying we have an additional thirty-two million on top of that?
Yes, you do.
Even, that's already been allocated from the feds?
It has been allocated from the federal government to you as an institution, and then that money is expected to be spent in, in twenty, in this year, twenty twenty-two. That money was allocated in May of twenty twenty-one. You get one year to effectively spend.
We received a total of sixty-eight million in dollars that we've allocated either from, to students, institutional dollars, technology.
So the thirty-two million for twenty twenty. So, so again, twenty twenty was three million, twenty twenty-one was twenty-nine million, thirty-two million those two years. You're saying when we see twenty twenty-two numbers, I'm going to see another thirty-two million dollars under the HERF grant revenue?
I would expect that. Now, to, to be clear, that HERF money, the government has effectively required you to give about half of it to the students that attend the institution. You have no control over where that money goes, that it's given to the student as an award to help them get through this time. So, so just from a context standpoint, take whatever number it is, divide by one-half or fifty percent. The, the only other major comment that I'd offer is, is this was in adoption of GATT, it'd be eighty-four. There's no significant additional fiduciary responsibility for the college identified. And then the last thing that I'd point out is, is all institutions are facing the same issue when it comes to cybersecurity. We do, we do, whether the institution is the top of its class or the absolute bottom, I would say you're at the, you're at a significant risk for cybersecurity threats. The, the number of institutions that are, are seeking to obtain the data of all the students of MCC is the top. And that number grows every day. And, and so I, I would say, you know, your investment in your cybersecurity, your discussion of that is always warranted and appreciated investment of your time, because, because you're dealing with the reputation of the college.
And so you're note in the management report on that, you mentioned it, but it was, that's just a, an FYI. You didn't, you didn't find anything in your findings, is that right?
Yeah, we, we would, we, we will include that in every higher education institution, because the risk is, the, the risk is there.
I just want to make sure you didn't have something specifically in mind.
Yeah, we, we did not have anything specific on, on the cyber issue at, at any.
And then you say our net position's going to increase in twenty twenty-one was ten million. And I think it's important for the board to realize again that the HERF was twenty-nine million. So really, without HERF, we would have lost nineteen million dollars last year.
I hope so. You, you, the, the, the HERF money that the student portion does go directly in and then out. So, so you can kind of take the student piece and push that to the side.
And you're saying we receive those dollars? We would receive those anyway?
Yeah, effectively. You have no control over it. You don't get any, you don't get any benefit as an institution. And also, it's, it's kind of one in, one out. It doesn't, doesn't. So, so six million of the twenty-nine million this year was a one in, one out. There was, that was a straight cash grant to the students.
So really, then we would have lost thirteen million. That makes you feel better.
A little bit better, right? The other side of that is, it's a little tricky to just point and say thirteen million, because a large chunk of that is lost revenue.
Sure.
So if COVID wasn't going on, would the college still have those revenues?
Sure, but as a board, as we get into twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, if that doesn't start to right-size, and we've got, we've got issues, we need to address. But obviously, I, that's premature at this point.
We, we don't have any other formal comments. The, the one thing that Dr. Swanson did mention was, it was, the, the, the thing that we see in all of our higher education institutions is in two thousand and eight, we had the first recession that we've experienced in a long time. Now, the first end of the birth rate, it was, it dropped below a replacement rate. What that has effectively done is it has reduced the college student population in the year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And so, so in those years, it will be much harder to gain that eighteen-year-old student. And so it's something to think about as an institution. That will affect every higher education institution, whether typical four-year or two-years. Yeah, the last thing I'll add is, we, we just printed our fiscal year twenty-two higher education outlook from BKD. I've provided hard copies to Patricia here. We'll send that out, well, the electronic copies to the board as well.
I, I just, I've got some more questions, but if you guys have questions, we'll get, we'll get to the second. On the management, the management letter management report here, is there anything, I went through your notes, is there anything in there that gives you pause or hesitation from, from me, the staff, or anything that, that needs to be addressed?
Nothing on my end. I, I would say we received full transparency from management. So it was complete cooperation. So there, there were no issues from our.
Sid, I'm trying to find my note. Sid, when I was reading through this, that there was some items that were identified that you had conversations with management about, but nothing that rose to the level of concern. I'm curious on what some of those items were.
Yeah, so some global communications, really, there's one mentioning, and anytime you have an adjustment in the financials, that's technically a deficiency. So we had a, there was an adjustment, I believe, of 400,000 to the compensated expenses that we included in the board. That's what that's referring to.
So we're just referring back up to that.
That's the difference.
That's just how we account. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Okay, we're gonna, this is gonna become the John Chuan Show. We've got a number of items. From I T. The first one is our Enterprise Resource Platform, or E R P. You may remember we had a conversation about this and he'll recap and give you that student input that you requested.
Thank you, Chancellor Beatty, President's card members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you an update of our efforts in exploring possible alternatives for our E R P platform. As you're aware, the college has been utilizing MCC, I mean Oracle PeopleSoft for the last 24 years as its E R P solution. And that platform allows us to be able to manage our core business processes across multiple modules, H R, finance, and student. On average, we process about 40,000 transactions a month. So it's a lot of work that goes on in, in the system. The E R P's task force recommended or observed that MCC is in need of a next-generation E R P system with specific capabilities in data synchronization and a cloud-native system that allows us to have it on the, on, on, on the cloud other than house it on, on premise. So we, let's like this. So we went back to the students based on your recommendation when we last provided you with an introduction to, to this process. And we would like to share with you some insights that we have gleaned from that process. One of the, one of the things that we discovered is that 44% of our students, only 44% of our students are satisfied with how they go about enrolling for class at MCC. So that's a big problem. Then another 44% are also uncomfortable with the process of the systems that we, they use to be able to apply to, to college at MCC. So that's a big percentage of our students that are not satisfied with the, the system that we have in place. So overall, 79% of our students express the need to have a mobile strategy that allows them to be able to register for class, that allows them to be able to monitor their financial aid and access, you know, other key services. So this, which is what we'll be looking for in the next generation E R P as we explore, you know, our E R P solutions. The next step at this point is, you know, the R F P posted is closing on January 4th. And they're expecting to provide, come up with a decision.
Questions for Dr. Chuan?
Please.
Dr. Chuan, of the 56%, for example, who had less than satisfactory reported experience with enrollment, do you have a sense of what those 56% have trouble with?
That's a good question. No, we don't because we did not want to, you know, when we ask these questions, we do not want to be too technical. And so we wanted to, just to get an idea, these students are quite savvy. They're coming from school districts that have perhaps better technology systems than ours. And so, you know, they get to know when there's something that is not supposed to be how it's, that is, that is how, it is not where it's supposed to be. So our, our questions did not get too technical.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question about the student input. You mentioned that several students were surveyed or responded. Do you have raw data in terms of how many students actually participated in the survey that were up to these numbers?
Yes, you know, actually, we would provide you with that, even all those data points. You know, and the slide, there, there's a lot of data in the survey. It's not a big presentation. Maybe it's about 10 slides, but you know, they're interesting insights, you know, in that survey. For example, we were surprised to note that 92% of our students, 92% of our students have Wi-Fi connection. And 60% of our students utilize Apple iOS system for their, for their computing needs. You know, all along, you know, we thought it was Android, but it's not Android. Most of them have iPhones and, and Macs and all that. So we'd be glad to provide you that information.
Dr. Chuan, you know, we're in competition with, with the technology and everything, all the other institutions out there. So when we're making these decisions to improve, this is helping us to compete with, with other institutions. Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
And maybe sometimes a student can get a bad taste in their mouth if they get to our site and it doesn't achieve what it is their expectation is.
Yes.
And they could spread that amongst their friends kind of quite easily, if, if you know what I mean, on the social media.
Right. I mean, the chancellor is very much aware of that, you know, one of, one of the goals that she has given us is to digitally transform the organization. And that was, you know, captured in the current strategic plan that we've been.
I'm happy we're moving this direction. My, my question is, all that long talk, about, I don't understand the cloud and all that. But I'm not asking to explain it, but say we, someone is interested in our data and we have it somewhere out there. How vulnerable are we if we're doing this?
Anytime you have a decentralized, you know, I T system, you know, comes with risks, you know, so, you know, the cloud is not entirely 100% secure. As you had from the auditors, every organization today is a, a participant. What you can do is to lose the probability of that risk, but you cannot completely eliminate it. There will always be residual risk left, you know, when it comes to security issues.
Last month, we just approved the acquisition of something that will be a higher level of security for some of our systems, did we not?
Yes.
His name has gone right out of my head.
Yes, you know, it was, you know, we have single sign-on, I think, you know, it was last month, single sign-on, allowing us to be able to synchronize passwords and all that and.
That was the presentation on the agenda for tonight.
Yes. Oh, okay, sorry. So we, we, we are, we are having all this different, you know, initiative and systems that we're introducing in the organization. It is just part of that effort to reduce the probability, but not entirely eliminate the risk. The risk will always be there. But, you know, from our past experience, just dealing with regulatory agencies, we need to be able to provide evidence that we are doing our due diligence to be able to provide, to, 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 to secure the information systems and the information contained in those systems within our organization.
So licensing and maintenance for the existing E R P, which will be on the agenda in a future month.
Correct. As the chancellor has mentioned, you know, we will be coming to the board to seek authorization to renew our current E R P license. And that will be in January. The expiration is February 2022, so we still have to keep working with Oracle PeopleSoft as we have two possible alternatives. We wanted to bring this to your attention so that you, you, you're prepared.
And lastly, our learning management system, which will be a joint presentation by Dr. Chuan and Dr. Snyder. The vice president right at the end.
Thank you, Chancellor. So as we, as we continue, you know, efforts to digitally transform the organization, we're doing that in a coordinated effort. We're also exploring possible alternatives for our L M S, you know, the, in the learning management system, which is a, a platform that allows us to be able to create content, to be able to track it, deliver it, and manage it, you know. And so we, I am going, I'm going to hand this over to my colleague, Dr. Snyder.
Good evening, President Gadsen, I appreciate you. I need to use my teacher voice. Thank you for giving me sometimes I talk to you about our search for possible new learning management system. As, as Dr. Chuan said, the learning management system is a place, single site for all of our students and instruction, instructional staff and instructors can get together to engage in their coursework and communication, take tests, view videos, and support any of those activities that students are engaged in. We have these for all of our courses, whether they're online, on-ground, virtual, whether they're for credit or not for credit. So because it's a single site where all of our faculty and students have access to, it's a great place for, like things like training. Our H R department has training that they, that they pride within the L M S, as does our instruction, instructional, like assessment projects. It's also a great place for faculty and staff to collaborate and to store resources for students and faculty. Our current L M S is Blackboard 9.1, Learn 9.1. People just call it Blackboard. But it's one of several of the L M S that Blackboard have. And this is our fifth platform that we've had since we started teaching online classes in the 90s. And this is our fifth and final year of our current contracts. And we just found out about a year ago that Blackboard was discontinuing support of this particular platform. So we took the opportunity to say, what can we find out? How can we improve this system? And let's, let's figure it out before we move forward anymore. What we'd like to get out of a new L M S is a more modern field for students, mobile-friendly, so that it can be accessed by any of their devices they bring to us, whether it's an iPhone, an iPhone like you were saying, or a tablet or a laptop. We also hope that there we would have better integration with our enterprise-level systems like PeopleSoft, like eLumen. And we hope to be able to get data directly out of the system into our data warehouse so we don't have to use it, have an extra system to use. We also would like to see better messaging, so we have better options for direct messaging and communication with our students and our staff and instructors. This is a process we've been going through just to explore the options. We had the R F P out this fall and we selected three vendors, four vendors, I'm sorry, to come in and provide demonstrations and interviews. We invite our, our committee itself is made up of I T staff and online staff. And we have three faculty members on there as well. We invited the Senate Technology Committee, as well as the Distance Education Committee to be part of these demonstrations. And then we sent out the recordings to all faculties that had a chance to look at them. After that, we asked the three vendors that were considering to provide sandbox sites so that our students, faculty, anybody wanting to go in and test the system, see how they function, how easy they were to use, and what they felt like. And they're, they're providing feedback to us either via direct email or surveys that we've put out.
How did the, are the students actually involved and engaged in that then? Are they actually doing that?
We invited. Yeah, no, we invited students by email, gave them the login information. There's a short survey and we also incentivized it with bookstore vouchers so that they can get in and complete it. We've had over 40 students so far to buy that input. It's been available, maybe five or six days. So hopefully, my goal is to be at least 100 students involved in that.
I'm sorry. So this is to replace Blackboard now, correct?
It's Learn 9.1.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so this looks like we're ready to go.
Summer. Yeah. Next slide. I know, we're shooting to have a decision made on November 22nd or 23rd. That's actually next Monday or Tuesday with all the feedback due over the weekend. And I guess it's time to present to the board a recommendation, get some, get all the legal aspects of it, contract completed, so we can start the transition in February. We'll have to migrate all the content that we have currently and train our faculty and then train and support our students as well. Our goal is to have all of our courses starting in summer on the new L M S. And that way we will be able to retire our old system at the end of June when it's contracted.
As you're going through this and think of future presentations to the board, I'm going to be really interested in, I know faculty and staff, obviously, that's, that's, I'm going to be really interested in the students' input. And if it's not aligned with the faculty and staff's input, for some reason there's a disparity there, I think we need to understand why that is.
I'd be happy to prevent that. Prevent that.
Not prevent. Yeah, yeah. It might be. It might be there's a good reason. But, but we just need to understand it because really this is, in my opinion, this is for them. And, and that's our market here, not faculty and staff.
I agree. Thank you for that.
Just to emphasize on what Dr. Stine is saying. You know, we do have the students at the center of this, but that is what informed us to keep moving towards this direction. Because our students are coming from those school districts that have superior systems. They're coming in, you know, using the L M S. And the L M S, this L M S that we are using currently is the, it's, it's an old generation L M S. For the next generation L M S, they're actually changing the name to digital environments. It's a, a, a digital, digital learning environments, digital learning environments. It is just not a learning management system, taking the focus away from faculty and putting the focus on students so that the students are seen not just as, you know, as recipients of instruction, but also creators of content.
Like that. Thank you. I'm going to let Dr. Chuan talk about the financial aspects of this. Because you might have tricky questions that I'm not sure of.
We never have tricky questions. So the financial impact for, you know, this exploration, so to speak, is that apparently we're paying about half a million dollars a year on our current L M S based on the conversation that we've had with vendors and based on looking at the functionalities of what we're looking at. We're likely to reduce that cost by almost 50%. Yes, a big reduction in the, in the cost. Why, why is there such a large reduction? As, as technology advances, you know, it tends to, the cost tends to get lower. But also, yes, this is going to be, you know, when, you know, we're, we're looking at this revolution of technology, everything is on the cloud, software as a service. You know, we, you know, it's getting cheaper to post some of these systems, you know, in Oracle Cloud or, you know, Amazon Cloud, other than having data centers that some of these organizations, the first had to, had to manage and. some of this organization, the first had to, had to manage and pay for it, or so.
Thank you. Lady.
Regular items, Dr. Chris, the capital projects update and the bond expenditures in your financial package. Um, so to reduce redundancy, we're gonna give you the highlights of the project.
Good. Thank you, Chancellor Beatty. President Skaggs trustees this evening, take the opportunity to again go over the budget to actual expenses by budget unit. Call your attention to the lower corner, the twenty-seven point three percent. The calculated target is, should be thirty-three point three percent, so you'll see that the majority of our actions are well under that target. And after evaluating the numbers, there are no anomalies or any concern at this point. So, and tracking the, and the tracking cycle for revenue and expenses. As you, uh, you can see individuals, but as a cumulative overall, overall revenues are up from last year and expenses are down from last year. So we are in a good position going forward.
In terms of the consent agenda, some of your normal suspects in terms of equipment and funds, personnel. We talked last meeting at length about equity gaps with students and completion rates. And we're gonna bring in a consultant to help us through developing the strategy that works best for MCC among pathways and allied health agreements. And quite a few, uh, slip sheets, the five point nine, we realized the name change on the contract, it had been bought out by a company since we created, uh, created the item, so we needed to update it to make sure that the new name was reflected on the contract. Six point two, six point three, six point four, sent an email regarding the the call. Contingency dollars and how we'll list that separately, so we, uh, redid those items.
Thank you, Chancellor, for having that accomplished. I think it's just going to be so much clearer for a naive reader.
Yes. All right, so, uh, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Dr. Beatty, I will, um, turn it over to you for the chancellor's quick.
We had a, uh, international exchange with Rotary members, so, uh, Chilele was from Zambia. He came and sat in our executive cabinet meeting and, um, joined us for half the day. Our men's and women's cross-country are champions, first and second. Uh, Jeff Omen, Albert Ray, and, uh, Jeff Mandich, these are, uh, three, well, Jeff, of course, works for us, but uh, they presented at the National SCUP, uh, Regional Conference on our Advanced Technical Skills and Security. So they're continuing to put us on the map. And then we had a number of recognitions at MCCA. Uh, there was a nice group of us there, you can see in the center. Uh, we had faculty who received national awards, our staff for our virtual enrollment center. Um, and we have staff service award. We had a couple of presentations by staff as well, so it was well attended. Lot of good information. And I believe, uh, Melissa Eaton is joining us virtually to provide her comment.
Good evening, Chancellor Beatty, President Skaggs, members of the board, faculty, staff, administrators, and the public. I'm happy to be able to show my smiling face, and thank you for allowing me to attend remotely. Um, author William Faulkner wrote that gratitude is a quality similar to electricity. It must be produced and discharged and used up in order to exist at all. In the effort toward generating, uh, some thankful electricity, I would like to share a few examples from my office as Senate President. First, I would like to extend my gratitude for the hard work of the CHRO Rosemary Martin, Chief Legal Officer and Sheriff, the Chancellor's Policy Review Committee, Sondra Garcia, and the members of that group for their thoughtful work in the creation of a consensual relationship procedure that it start, that is starting its way through the shared governance process to create an institutional process and procedure sensitive to the needs of the board, as well as to marginalized groups concerns that were raised in the past months. Second, MCC has an upcoming HLC monitoring visit in twenty twenty-two to examine our work in program review and assessment. MCC has two new tools available, both aimed at increasing participation and collaboration. The eLumen program is useful in its efficient recording, reporting, and processing of classroom assessment results. The payoff of the training comes in December, when the assessment results are due, and next spring we'll see even greater participation with the software and at participation rates. Likewise, under the initiative of Vice Chancellor Sue Gautjes, every faculty member now has an additional monthly virtual opportunity for collaboration and planning with their program and discipline peers. It had been a long time concern that most faculty only had two designated times per academic year set aside to do this important cross-district work for assessment, program review, and curriculum decisions. Lastly, there have been some bumps in the road in the implementation of the MCC Academic and Career Pathways Initiative. In spring twenty twenty-one, faculty requested more direct involvement in the review of the advising templates created for their programs. And after summer discussions, faculty were given two opportunities this fall to revise existing template drafts created by the Steering Committee. Although there have been sometimes passionate differences of opinion about what those templates should look like, particularly when comparing MCC pathways templates to similar efforts at other American Association of Community Colleges Pathways Institutions, I am especially grateful for the open communication. I learned a lot in a recent all-faculty virtual meeting on the topic, as well as in several conversations with the chancellor to attempt to reconcile the fa- faculty concerns. And with the chancellor's assistance, there will be facilitation and mediation this spring and in the upcoming future aimed to help MCC move forward with the pathways implementation. Thank you. And lastly, I want to extend my gratitude to the rest of the faculty leadership team, the Senate, and the Executive Committee of the Senate Faculty Association Leadership, and all of you who do the work of the college in the various committees, councils, and affinity groups. Your voice and your work matters. Thank you. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Milan. All right, I believe. Are you sure that concludes my report?
All right, uh, we'll go in then to the consent agenda. I'll take the motion to adopt by two foot one. For a second.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Oh, yes, uh, thank you. President Skaggs. I did have an inquiry about the, uh, election coming up, and, um, we were, I was concerned with the date that, uh, folks are gonna maybe register for for the election.
They, they shared a little bit the, uh, the date.
Remember, but were we always doing April as the election? There, I, holy, holy moly, is that like a winter thing? I don't remember all that. I remember it being cold. It's been six years. Some of you weren't here. When we were waiting outside over there. And we had some former.
I enjoy status, they, a bunch of other things, and this is one of the things that they can do in that quarter.
Thank you, Dr. Beatty. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes at a five point one zero.
Uh, this is the acceptance of the audit report. We had a good, uh, presentation with, from our auditors today, and I recommend approval. Clean audit.
Take a motion to adopt. For a second. Is there any other questions or discussion related to the audit while BKD's here? All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. Um, single sign-on solution out of five eleven.
Uh, single sign-on solution, this is another way of adding identity management protection. Uh, part of what we heard referenced earlier today. The pain, actually, but it's good for our system. You gotta do a push and find into your phone, similar to somebody else's system I know that makes it difficult to find anyone, but anyway. Yes, that's it. You're gonna get an email from the board chair, you're gonna have passwords and all kinds of stuff. Anyway, uh, this protects our system, single sign-on, and, uh, there was a, there, in case there were questions, uh, a little question for me in terms of the discrepancy in price here. Uh, the lowest one, that class blanket was not a complete cloud-based solution, so therefore, we didn't talk about that. I, the lowest, but it was not best. So I recommend approval for a quick one.
Um, they moved, you know, this is a motion, is it second? Second, the movement is seconded, but, uh, any discussion?
Dr. Beatty, this is the first year we've done this particular signing, and this is a form of protection.
Yeah, I think we actually started it last year, this might be the second year, given, uh, the exposure we had to our system.
And if you're, if you're enrolled, then you're able to sign in. It's not just my mom can sign in. Okay. Okay, thank you, Dr. Beatty. Thank you, Trent.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, uh, out of five point one two.
This for, uh, computer to my pretty unit for our radiology program. The CR student's current and is essential to the program, and I recommend approval.
Motion to approve. For a second.
Second.
Second, discussion. All favor say aye. Vote, motion passes, add a five point one two.
C and C late, this is, uh, essential to the machining program. And, and these are part of the equipment that comes out of our purchase, I think.
I'll take a motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, the move is seconded. Any discussion?
A quick reiteration, please. I think you answered my question, Chancellor. This organs fund, that's the grant source?
All favor say aye. Vote. Passes run at six point one.
Revenue generating of our parking spaces, a hundred fifty parking spaces, you can see what it yields for our neighbors, make sure, for us to jump. I recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Remove.
For a second. Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Passes at six point two.
And just to clear, the Broadway Plaza and print shop relocation, the print shop is moving from the B T campus over to the basement of the, uh, HSI. We've got a number of renovations that need to take place in Broadway Plaza. We had one bid for this item and two, uh, responders. And, um, as you can see, we've listed the continues separately again.
I'll take the motion to approve.
Remove.
For a second.
Second.
The movement is seconded, discussion. Is another one we talked about in some of the work sessions.
Please, I don't, but, but, thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Beatty, um, we're, the print shop, what is that? Is that something in-house?
That's our in-house printing.
I see, I see in.
That's when we had the work session on.
Yeah, so like that.
Recycle paper? No, I don't.
Yes, but like that Martin Luther King, nice display that's printed in-house.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Beatty.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, vote, motion passes at six point three.
This is, uh, we presented on a number of occasions about the addition to our automotive program at the Longview Campus. Needing a more comprehensive automotive institute. We're gonna add on to the high, um, we're gonna add on to the current building to allow space for paint mixing and, um, other aspects of the program related to collision. And was recommended to.
I'll take a motion to approve.
Remove.
For a second. So Dr. Beatty, well, they should be painting vehicles and things in there then?
Goal is to add, um, collision and diesel. But I think diesel's the next phase, right?
Yes.
That's really, you just seen it over there, that's really impressive, so.
Just a clarification, but this is the, um, early bidding information. This is not, this is not a total project cost. Correct?
No, this is the total project cost.
It is the entire cost.
Yes, not the equipment, just the construction renovation of the.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes at a six point four.
And six point four, another project we've been talking about quite a bit. At the Maplewood Campus, our sports training center addition. As you may recall, the Northland Human Services, where our fitness center is, has been sold. We are leasing that. So we have a relocation of that, uh, equipment and other things that will be going into uh, this area for not only our athletes, but for our employees to have an area to become more healthy.
Take a motion to approve.
Remove.
For a second. Discussion.
Is then, is this gonna be like a indoor facility?
Yes.
Is it similar to, uh, you know, the Longview partnered with it, with the city, and, and they did a exercise facility? Is that what this is going to be, or is this strictly for athletes?
Yes and no. So it's gonna be like that, but not at the same scale. I don't think it's gonna be the same square footage, and it's not just for athletes.
For community, or just our students and athletes? Very good. Take the trend.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Then utility easement, last item, six point five.
We need, add just the one that I didn't use closely, but I believe this is, uh, we need space to move the equipment. We gotta get this easement to move, uh, have access. I'm sorry, help me.
Okay, no, the city requires an easement in order to be able to maintain their utility lines. We, as a port, have to give them that allowance to be able to maintain those utility lines within the parameters of our new project. This is a requirement to actually get full occupancy approval from the city. Is that easement?
Do you have independence?
Yes.
Thank you.
Take a motion to approve.
Remove.
For a second.
Very good.
Cost us a dollar. All in favor say aye.
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 Vote. Motion passes. Uh, anything else for the good of the cause, Dr. Beatty?
I hope everybody listening and my board members have, and the team and everybody in the room have an amazing Thanksgiving.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Wait, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye.